Okay, good evening members.
Evening.
Welcome to this council meeting on Wednesday the 28th of June. And welcome to anybody who's currently watching on the live stream. If I could ask you first if you could turn off your mobile phones or turn them to silent. Please don't use them while we're in the meeting, thank you. Item, item one apologies. I have apologies from K Dark and Tony Avenden.
With your permission if I may say something before you start?
If I could just, yeah, just get rid of that apologies, yeah. Are there any other apologies at all? No, thank you. Yes councillor?
Good evening everyone. Today is Muslim World is celebrating Eid.
Eid Mubarak.
Eid Mubarak, thank you. So I would like to wish my councillor colleagues and the staff in Ramesgate Town Council and people who are watching from home, happy Eid Mubarak. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I want to have a happy Eid. Okay, item two, any declarations of interest? No declarations of interest. Public participation on item three, any public request to speak, there are no public here. And also part two of item three, report from county councillors on matters directly relating to Ramsgate. The answer to that is no, we haven't got anybody. Right members, I'm going to ask, well firstly I'm going to announce that we have an emergency motion that I have allowed to come on to the agenda. It's, it's from councillor Austin and we've talked about it or emailed backwards and forwards about it and I'm personally not very happy to support it and I'm sure you all will. So I need to ask you as per standing order 10A to suspend the meeting under standing order 9B which no motion may be moved at a meeting unless it's on the agenda and the mover has given written notice of its wording to the proper officer at least five clear days before the meeting. Clear days do not include the day the notice of the day the meeting. So I can confirm that that is correct, so could I ask for that to be all in favour, suspend your standing orders? Thank you. Right, I will, wherever I've got it, to, if you're okay councillor Austin, are you okay for me to do this? Right. This is in advance of the consultation launching Ramsgate Town Council to consider opposing any proposal to the closure of the Richborough tip.
Yes.
And the motion is to release a press statement stating this intention, engage with the neighbouring campaigns that are being established to fight the closure and return to the council with a plan of what a Ramsgate Town Council can do to encourage the waste and recycling centre to stay open. A Ramsgate Town Council will of course consider and respond to the Kent County Council consultation when it commences next month. But I, councillor Austin is putting that forward, so you proposing that councillor Austin, I will second it. Members, any discussion?
Yeah, two things absolutely, I'm not closing it. Can I ask T N C's point to be honest, and do we know what Dover's point of view, because I realise it comes under Dover, I realise it's a Casey facility, but I wanted, do we know the district council's point of view?
What I can advise you is having talked with the leader of Thannick District Council, we will be putting, we will be objecting to the closure.
Yes.
And as far as I'm aware Dover District Council work is doing the same.
Right.
I believe that that is the case.
Do we need to write to them as well as Ramsgate Town Council?
Yeah, we'll notify and we'll do, you know, the leader of Thannick District Council and I expect us to go in with everybody relating to that.
Cheers.
I think, and do you want to say anything further councillor Austin?
I was going to say that there is a fair opposition vote, the balance of votes.
Councillor Green?
This Facebook page, I've been, I've sort of been on that. I wasn't able to attend the Sandwich Town Council last Wednesday, but they knew I sent my apologies and I shared it and quite a few residents from here actually attended that meeting because I shared it, so, and there's also a petition going around. So that one of the Sandwich councillors actually responded to an email I sent, I think it's off Ramsgate, so I think we need to link up with the Sandwich guys, because I think it's going to impact that side of Ramsgate and Sandwich quite badly.
Yeah, I mean I think what's the most important thing about this is that out of the three options, Richborough is to close it, and each option, so it's not an actual option.
No.
There isn't an option for it to be kept open, so this is why we should, councillor Green?
When this first became public knowledge, which I think was about a month ago now, it's a bit more, I wrote to KCC asking them to engage Ramsgate Town Council directly. They refused, they referred me to the consultation.
Consultation, yeah.
Now, I do know that Richborough Waste and Recycling Centre was up some years ago.
Yeah.
And then, then KCC councillors had to organise a campaign against doing that, I know that because this was one of those councils, which eventually was successful. Now KCC are coming back, as you say, with three options, all of which involve the closure of Richborough, so I'm pulling behind this campaign.
Yeah, and obviously.
And I think we should, I think our role is purposeful to ask individual residents to join the campaign that's already running, once again to let KCC know our struggle.
Well, that is, that would be part of it. I have been asked by the town clerk, and I'll read what she's said. If considering the matter before the consultation launches, I would ask that members be mindful of predetermination. It's appropriate for members to say that we oppose the closure, but everyone should keep their minds open to change this opinion when the consultation starts. And I think what she's saying, what she's saying is that we should look at all of the options before making our mind up, which is a proper protocol, you know, it's the same as planning, you would do that, wouldn't you, right? But obviously there isn't an option for Richborough to remain open, so I just thought that we should say that. I doubt very much, as the town clerk says, if the KCC consultation is as we expect, I can't see this being the case unless KCC propose to open a new tip on the opposite side of the road, and that isn't going to happen, is it? So anyway, so anybody got anything else councillor Austin?
I just have to pick up on councillor Green's comment because he's made a lot about the Royal KCC.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah. I think that's where we need, in Thannick we need to be with Thannick District Council and Kent County Council. Yeah, absolutely, apart, as well as the public of course. Hang on, I'll just let councillor Ashley speak first, go ahead.
Quick points, it'll just increase by a second, the closing, and then the closing ten minutes, that's a good one, the campaign against.
Yeah.
The date that the, it's originally, they went there at seven o'clock morning, and said, oh, no one's using it, and it's closed it. So it's ridiculous, hasn't it? So I don't think they can do that again. And the Margate tip is far too small, as we know.
Indeed.
Be able to cope with it.
Indeed.
And it's hefty, and it's travelling across Margate, so, but I know councillor Shonk has been to some meetings over there and to some demonstrations, he's been to visit the tip and speak to the workers as well.
Good, thank you.
We would be well of how many people use the tip, because you now have to book, don't you, to go, so surely these numbers would be helpful.
Councillor Austin, did you want to come back? No? You okay? Anybody else?
I'd say also the staff there, we've been here so long. It's been a loss all the time, not all the time, you know, that's a big loss to this area. I know it's in Dover as you said, but it really would be a loss this area.
I think, I think that's what many, when the consultation comes out, I think we need to meet specifically regarding this matter and then so we can come up with everything that we want to put into our objection against it and then tie in with Thannick District Council and our Kent County Councils, councillor Green?
Would it be an idea to ask KCC how much it actually costs to run it?
Yeah, I'm saying that anything like that, once that consultation starts, we can, we can do that. So if you're by the standard, we're all in favour of this and we'll carry that forward and then we'll call a meeting as soon as the consultation is out so that we can get all our details together. Yeah, so can I have a show of hands, I need to take a vote please? Unanimous. Right, thank you for that.
Thank you Chair. Please pass our thanks.
Yes, indeed, indeed. So I now need to ask you to vote to approve state standing orders and the meeting will recommence as per the agenda. All in favour, please show. You don't have to, you don't have to members who can cancel, I can have an early night, that'd be great. I know, that's carried, thank you. Right, item four is minutes of the council of the 7th of June, which is the extraordinary meeting. Can I have a proposal please? Councillor Nicksey in a second, councillor Havington. Anybody got any issues in relation to the minutes, alterations or amendments? No, all in favour please show. Thank you, that's carried. Okay. Right, item five is policy and procedures. Now we've got eight policy and procedures, hopefully you've all read this, because I propose to take them all in one lump. Councillor Britton?
I just wanted to say to the supporters of the type of news, I just wanted to make a little bit of a few time.
Have you talked about, you've talked about the minutes?
No.
In the, within the policies?
Yeah. Yeah, the town clerk's taken those on board and those amendments will be made.
While you're chatting away there, so anybody got any issues with taking the whole lot in one? Councillor Moore?
Could I ask you Chairman if we could defer by seven? Because I haven't decided until now, now we've read it.
I'd have to ask, I'd have to ask the members if they would want to do that, are you proposing that?
Yes, please.
Is there a second, is there a second for it?
I'll second that, I think if the mayor hasn't seen it, it's only, she has time to.
Not, I don't want to get into anything here, but you should have read it before you came here, so that's the only point I would make.
I haven't been given it, people, I'm, it's welcome to read it.
It would have been.
Chair, what councillor Moore is saying is that this was created and is written here, that it was as proposed by the mayor's PA and the town sergeant in conjunction with the mayor, but the mayor has told me that she wasn't involved, so.
I wasn't the mayor then.
Councillor Ari, did you go through this with the mayor's PA and town sergeant? No, okay, so we do.
Okay, someone should have advised me of this because I didn't, I didn't know about that at all. Okay, so we've got a proposal that we do not, as part of item five, we do not consider item five of five and item seven of five and is to be brought back to council.
It's just this one.
Is it just seven, you said five, sorry five, seven, okay, five, seven, beg your pardon. All in favour of, sorry councillor Green?
Until this is done, yeah, yeah.
All in favour, please show?
Yes.
Okay, that's carried. Anybody got anything else to say in relation to one to eight, omitting seven?
Subject to the sounds in the top.
Yeah, well you've just heard that that's been done, town clerk is saying that and that will be done. So I'll propose that, can I have a second please? Councillor Havington? You're behind you, behind you Laurie, I couldn't see, she had her head up in the air. Right, all those in favour please show? Thank you, that's carried, it's item five done, thank you. Item six, representation on outside bodies. I think we do need to come and do all this in one lump. So item one of six is to consider and approve the advisory note, the role of council representatives on outside of bodies. Anybody got any comment on that? I think it's pretty straightforward, it's common sense effectively. So I'll propose item one, have a second please, councillor Nicksey, all in favour please show? Thank you, that's, that carried. Item two, nominate one representative for the Clockhouse Project Working Group, currently councillor Avenden. I propose councillor Avenden, even though he's not here, I will, seconder? All in favour of councillor Avenden? Yeah. Hopefully you're watching Tony, so it's all, it's back to you again. No, there's no one better than Tony for doing that. Item three, to nominate two representatives for Kent Association of Local Councils, currently that's councillor Heatherington and councillor Nicksey.
Yes, of course.
Can I ask if councillor Havington and councillor Nicksey would still like to do that? Councillor Nicksey? Yeah, okay, okay, we thank you for that. Can we have a, can we have a second, one second councillor Moore? All in favour please show? That's carried, thank you. Item four, to nominate one representative for the Kent and Medway CCG Primary Care Network, currently councillor Heatherington.
I nominate councillor Heatherington.
And councillor Austin, you're seconded, you're okay with that councillor Heatherington?
I would like to build that on.
Crack on, I'll say, all in, all in favour, please show? Thank you, that's carried. Well, item, item four, sorry, we've just done that, item five, to nominate one representative for the Ramsgate Event Organisers Group, currently councillor Green.
I would not wish to continue.
You do not, you should continue. Thank you councillor Green. Anybody wish to put themselves forward?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Driver, fantastic, can I have a second please? Everybody's seconded, take your pick, all in favour please show? Thank you councillor Driver, that's fantastic. Okay, councillor, councillor, item, item six, to nominate one representative for the Thannick Area Group, currently councillor Green.
I'm going to manage to get to one meeting, and this is an important committee that brings together all the parish and town councils in Thannick. I don't want, I shouldn't be doing it, somebody else.
No, that is not, it's not as important, for you then, councillor Green? No, no, I should, yeah, yeah, I understand, but would anybody like to take that on?
No, but it might be useful if we know the name, if the question doesn't want to get there.
I think that the town clerk would put that forward.
I think, I think.
Anybody want to put themselves forward? No, what I propose then is if we, we will not decide this at this point, I think we need to find out as councillor Green says about the days and then we'll see, we'll see for now, we'll, we'll put it on with the, together with councillor Moore's.
Well, when it comes up, could I make the suggestion, not to decide now, but once we get the dates, of course, if people could put their name against a date, then it doesn't have to be the same councillor, does it? So if you can make a date, would it be advisable that you could do that?
I think that's, I'd have to ask the town clerk on that about whether we could have multiple, whether we can have a, yeah, yeah.
Of course, I just mean if they have, at least if they have an RTC representative.
Yeah.
Okay, so if members are okay with that, we'll carry that over and we'll get some advice from town clerk. Thank you, thinking Batman. Okay, move on to item seven, finances of grants, we have five, five, I'm sure I haven't got any over here, we have five items on item seven and I'm going to ask the deputy town clerk to go through the items.
Okay, members, seven one is a report of payments, council is asked to note the payments between 19th May and 22nd of January, authorised by the town clerk and RFO, total eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-four pounds and twenty pence, this is everything under a thousand pound. And also to approve the payments above the threshold delegated to the town clerk, so everything over a thousand pounds, which totals thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-three pounds thirty. Within that, there are, there's confidential payments, which is staff wages, HMRC and pensions at just under twenty-six thousand, thank you. So I'd like to note the payments of the town clerk and to approve the payments above us, thank you.
Councillor Green?
I'll say, yeah, councillor Austin second.
Members, any comments? All in favour please show? That's carried, thank you.
Thank you members.
Item two?
This is the financial statement cashbook, which actually is from last financial year and feeds into the AGAR or the annual return, so these figures are what I have used to create the annual return. And that is just for you to note please, thank you.
Members? I'll approve, I'll, I'll propose, I'll get them in here, I'll propose that we note it, councillor Green second, all in favour please show? Thank you very much.
Thank you members. The next one, seven three, is the internal audit report, so our internal audit comes and has a look at all our accounts, so this gain is for the last financial year and you have, he's signed us off and he's also provided a report, he's quite happy with what we're doing according to his report, thank you. And that is to, consider the findings and review, so consider and approve, note.
Councillor Green?
I think we note and congratulate town clerk, have to town clerk.
Seconder? Councillor Austin? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
That's quite funny, they didn't catch the microphone, they're telling each other to do.
Thank you. All those in favour please show? Thank you.
Okay, the next one is the annual governance statement by resolution, so this is section one, page four, the annual governance and accountability return for the year end 31st of March, this is to be approved please.
Councillor Nicksey's proposed second please, councillor Britton, all in favour please show? Thank you, it's carried.
And finally, for the annual return, this is to approve the accounting statements for 2022-23, which is section two, page five of the AGAR for the year ended 31st of March, so this is to approve seven five please, thank you.
I propose, councillor Green second, any comments? All in favour please show? Thank you.
And I'll ask you to sign at the meeting.
Sign all that. Right, item eight, committees, to appoint a vice chair of financial general purposes committee which was deferred from council meeting on the 7th of June, this councillor would also become a bank signatory. So can I ask if there is anybody who wishes to be vice chair of F and GP please?
Come on.
Got to be.
Can I just say, I call, it clashes, I want to turn the signatory for the town council that I'm chair of.
And I'd say it wouldn't be right for me to do it either as chair of council, so anybody wish to, I mean I can always chair a meeting if, if the chair isn't available, I can do that as the chair of council. Okay, no one?
I'm on planning, it's, anyway, you wouldn't want me managing money, I'm absolutely, I'm good with everybody else's and not with my own.
Yeah. Because sorry, stop cross talking please.
It is important that other than me, it's involved, can I, I'm trying to answer the council.
Can I just say, the point of it is, this is a council, it's a signatory, so we're doing it to the law, I just know that the person's contract is binding, can't.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, bank signatories, it's quite straightforward, I annoy you with an email every week for you to log into the account of councillor Austin, councillor Auburn and councillor Green currently do that, it's quite straightforward, there's no checks to sign unless I'm sick and then we need to use checks, that's the involvement with the bank account.
And councillor Green and myself have dealt with a number of matters in relation to general purposes, so it's, it's to back up David and it's to, it's to ensure that we are doing the right thing. Finance, it's councillor Austin.
I don't mind remaining as a bank signatory, but I don't want to.
That's what I was going to suggest, you see as well.
Because we're on planning, so.
No, I know, I am as well, yeah, no. Councillor Nicksey?
I'm not going to put myself forward, only because I don't think that somebody in the town should be the vice chair of the council.
Would it be come for it?
Exactly. I do stand by what David's just said, and having, you know, for example being vice chair when Peter Campbell died and it all going awry and then having to find out what was going on, it was very difficult if somebody else didn't know, I really would recommend someone who doesn't have a role just to be the vice chair, I'm, I'm not saying there isn't any work involved in it, but I do think it's crucial to look upon it, yes.
Okay, I've just seen a wave from my right hand side and councillor Makinson, are you putting yourself forward councillor Makinson?
Thank you.
You're not on planning, you're on planning, because it clashes with the meetings.
No.
Not every month, but.
Well, if the vice chair wants to.
As a meeting chairman.
Yeah. If you're not there, I'll chair you. Sorry to interrupt, but as vice chair, if both you. Sorry to interrupt, but as vice chair, if both you if David Stephen and the vice chair is out, I can still chair the meeting. It's not that so much, it's just have somebody who is aware of what's going on and the backstop. So it is quite important, if they are on planning, it's not, actually, I can chair the meeting, it's not a problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat.
I will, I proposed, uh, councillor Makinson then? Thank you kindly. That's good, thank you. Um, we now come to item nine, which is a confidential matter. And, um, I must now ask that, uh, we, I recommend that, that under the Public Bodies Act, uh, we're accredited representatives. Uh, if anybody should, uh, be disclosed, uh, there should be no disclosure of information during this particular item, so therefore we need to expunge our live stream, so.